Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 7th, Learning Session for the Shakopee School Board. Sarah, would you please take the roll?
Sure. Bowerman, Hallid.
Here.
Nickian.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Sponson.
Good evening. Item number one, or item number two, either, is Pledge Allegiance. Who's joining us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three, which is consideration the agenda as presented. Are there any additions, Sarah?
No.
Anybody else have to add on the additions?
No.
Okay, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Tony?
Second.
Second in the discussion. All those who've been identified by saying aye?
Aye.
Or same sign, motion carries. All right, good news item, item number 3.1, I would like to please call up Mr. TJ Hendrickson, if you would come on up and I would like to read a little something on your behalf. Oh yeah, pick two, please join us. Shakopee Public Schools named the Project Lead the Way, Designated Distinguished District, West Junior High earns Distinguished School Honor. Shakopee Public Schools is being recognized nationally as a Project Lead the Way distinguished district. Shakopee is one of just 30 districts to be recognized. Additionally, West Junior High is being honored as a distinguished school for Project Lead the Way. Shakopee began offering PLTW courses 10 years ago in 2008. Now, for immediate release, I'm going to read this little number. Atlanta, Georgia, you gotta make it sound official. Atlanta, Georgia, April 13th, 2018. Shakopee West Junior High Schools Technology Engineering Education Teacher TJ Hendrickson received the Teacher of Excellence Award at this year's International Technology and Engineering Educators Association, ITEA, conference held in Atlanta, Georgia, April 12th through the 14th. ITEA represents teachers, state supervisors, and others who are involved in advancing technology and engineering education in our society. Hendrickson has been instrumental in building Shakopee West Junior High and Shakopee School District's Technology and Engineering Program for the past 26 years. During his tenure at Shakopee Schools, Shakopee has won 27 state and national recognitions for its technology and engineering program. Mr. Hendrickson, we are honored to have you again in our presence. I don't even know what to say, other than you do the talking. Tell us about this honor.
Um, it has been, it's been a heck of a ride. It's been fun, because a lot of people don't realize that a lot of the stuff that we as teachers get, as far as recognitions and accolades and that kind of stuff, really isn't about us. It's about the kids that are willing to take that leap of faith, to trust us to lead them kind of in a direction, and then, at least in my classes, where it gets a little bit frantic, is having the faith to step away and let them kind of choose their path. So, 10, 12 years ago, when we started the Project Lead the Way program, I was really excited, because it was completely different. It really challenges kids to step outside of their boundaries, but within their comfort zone. So, over the years, we've been able to do a lot of things with it. A lot of our stuff has gone, our students' work has gone into the national training that PLTW does, which is kind of cool. So, I started figuring that out the other day. We had one student who did the playground activity, drew it all up in like three days. So, design created this whole playground, it was really awesome. Even got down to getting all the colors and the spectrum in it, so that the kids could go out in our classes and learn the colors. So, like, the monkey bars had crayons that were the poles that held it all up. So, it did a really, really awesome job. He did it, like I said, in three days. I showed it to somebody at Project Lead the Way, and the next thing I know, next summer, when I go to start doing teacher trainings, they're like, this is what everybody's doing across the nation. So, between that, being pilot programs, being just really fortunate, I will be honest. When it came to Shakopee, little community, little things, big dreams. And I will say that a lot of our students now, now that they finally figure out social media, which is kind of funny, got on Facebook, and that was, been kind of my nemesis, because now I actually, it's interesting, you care how many of our kids actually did pursue something in the STEM fields, either. We've got one kid down at University of Madison, doing biomolecular genetic DNA manipulation, that's his major. We've got another student that created a patent for a 3D printer, that personally, I hope he remembers me, because he made 35 million off of it, as a senior project coming out of college. We've got a ton of students that are going through pilot school, we've got a ton of students that are being engineers, electrical engineers, scientists, computer scientists, civil engineers, architects, and it's interesting to see that those choices, that little interest that you try to kind of fan the flames, has really taken off. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do that.
Do you have a guest?
I do, this is Victor Driger. He is our regional representative for Project Lead the Way. We've got Minnesota, South Dakota.
North Dakota.
North Dakota, and he's the Director of School Engagement for Project Lead the Way.
This is probably my favorite part of my job, is to come around and celebrate with districts. One of the biggest things I'm here tonight, just to congratulate you guys on the great program that you have. Really, the recognition comes in the first year of the recognition program, so as we've changed into this recognition avenue, like you mentioned before, the district itself is one of 30 in the nation to receive this recognition, one of only two in Minnesota, while the junior high, Junior High West, is only one of about 114 schools nationwide that got the recognition. The glory and everything really comes down upon the teachers. I think it's a testament here with TJ, as well as the teachers, I think, that are sitting behind me that do this work every day, and not just during the school days, but before school, after school, and on all those weekends that we know about. The other thing, too, is being a former teacher myself, and being proud to be on the ranks with a master teacher, with TJ, for the past 10 years, has been a pleasure on my part, too. But really, the recognition of all the hard work and the leadership of the district, to pull off elementary, middle school, junior high, and high school programs of biomedical science, engineering, and computer science, and we know that the district budgets are constrained, everything's pulling on those, time during the day is also very cramped, but to provide these opportunities, as you just heard from TJ, changes lives, and really is the future of not just our communities, but our nation. Thank you guys very much. I think at this time, we have a recognition for the teachers as well.
Correct. Yes, we do, and I want to call out the fact that although TJ got the Teacher of Excellence, there was an entire support staff this year that is also equally deserving of all of these accolades. So, if you want to go ahead and call up everyone one at a time, we have some certificates for everybody.
Thanks. This'll be good for the whole floor, so I can screen this up.
All right. Thank you.
Rob Maynard.
Who's this?
This is Rob Maynard. So, Rob is kind of spearheading Computer Science and Engineering, he's done a lot with the Samsung Tomorrow Competition. And Martin Loman. And then we have other teachers that couldn't make it for the other commitments. We've got, yeah, we've got John Ral, Rachel Click, who's heading up the biomedical, Chris Lyons, who's at a golf outing today for his athletes, John Omen, John Ral, who we mentioned, Jake Tofar, who's done a whale of a job this year as well, believe he made it to semifinals?
Semifinals.
Semifinals for Teacher of the Year for the state of Minnesota. And Todd Ayers. Perfect. All right, thank you much. Appreciate it. And just so I don't forget, on the 16th, we have Saber Showcase. Project Lead the Way is coming, I believe Vince Bertram, Dr. Vince Bertram is coming, who is, he's been on the last couple presidential councils for STEM education, he advises basically the Board of Education for the nation. He's going to present us with some recognitions for the District of the Year, and that'll be from 3:15 to 4:15 on the 16th. And then we also have students, where you get to hear some of the students kind of thrown a little bit under the bus, they're actually going to be part of the presentation, and then we roll into Saber Showcase, where they'll be presenting our projects for that night. So, we'd like to extend that invitation to everybody, and hope, hope that you guys could make it. Thank you very much.
Sit tight, we're going to get our picture taken. Come on. Questions? I think you want to ask a bunch of people.
That one shifts kind of this way. Yes. One, two, three. One more for safety. One, two.
Three questions from the board? Did you guys receive a couple of questions from our board members? Would you be willing?
I don't know, a question, but I do have a kid who, for years, said he was either going to be a farmer or a police officer, and he's in ninth grade right now, and I will tell you, there is only one class that he comes home and talks about, is his engineering class.
I thought you were going to say egg or something. Don't worry.
So, I am thrilled that he may choose a different career.
Just doing the inclusive.
Yes.
Yeah, that's another one of our projects, we're really excited about, is this year we partnered up all of the kids with a client, a client group that's one of our special needs students, so they have to come up with a, well, they have to come up with something to help them basically make life easier for that particular student. So, some groups are coming up with one thing, other groups, I've got one group that's got like five hundred projects they're trying to pull off in two days.
And TJ, I need you to know that for these kids, it may have seemed a little bit scary and overwhelming when they started this, knowing that they were actually, that they had real clients and impacting real lives, but I will tell you, the pride and the confidence that he has gotten through this, he has never felt as good about an assignment as he feels about this one.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Best quote I ever heard from our kids this year about this project is, "It stopped making about the grades." And I was like, oh, A-type personalities, when they're all of a sudden saying, "Yeah, grades don't matter," it's like, you need to be worried about you, but it's really neat, because all of a sudden, they do care about the kids, and it's putting a face to it. So, that makes a big difference. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael.
I'd just like to say, thank you for all that you guys do for our students, we really appreciate it. And as a mother of a special needs kid, I get this pride that you guys are doing, it's so meaningful, so thank you for that.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And TJ, which one of your kids taught you how to use social media?
She's the one, she's, so, I have one computer tech near my house, so when I figure things out, we go find Trina. She's getting pressure from kid number two, so we'll see, and I'm hoping kids still use technology when it gets to school, so, but I appreciate everything, and I really, truly, and honestly appreciate all of the support from the school board, Nancy, the stuff that she's done, and she's kind of pushed us along many, many times along the way, and we've got some fantastic staff that really do put in the time and the hours, so I really appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
All of you. All right, move on to item number 3.2, that is the draft SEA's school calendar, 19, 20.
Sure. Yep, yep. Come on up there, Dale. Basically, we are just presenting to you the draft, the 19, 20 calendar, there's, I don't know if there's too much to talk about on here, but again, you know, we've got the similar changes that we had to the 18, 19 calendar. Dale, any comments?
Yeah, the biggest difference between 18 and 19, and the 19, 20 ones, is just the fact that we don't have those moving day issue or any of that, that kind of thing, and so it's a little bit more standard.
We don't yet, we'll probably come up with something.
No, I don't, I don't think we will. And, you know, we're back to that situation now, where we're not into the construction, compacting, which gives us a little bit more flexibility, which is kind of a relief after multiple, multiple years of living under that. So, you see, we go through that first full week of June, and that gives us a little extra flexibility in terms of where things go. So, other than that, it looks very, very similar to the 18, 19 calendar, those are really the only changes, so you'll see the continuation of the elementary, the E5 Asses Connect Days, and, you know, and the same strategy that we used with Thanksgiving break and winter break are reflected in November and December, the same setup in terms of that. So, the two calendars are actually very, very similar.
We will put out a communication soon on what those elementary Asses Connect Days will look like each year, but once the parents do it one year, they'll, they'll get the hang of it.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear and see what it looks like and how it goes, I mean, I think it's a great concept, so. I guess the only question I had was, we've settled in the high school with the four early release days, is that giving us what we need from a staff development time? This is Gary and Dale, or has there been any discussion of expanding that?
We actually just started talking about, you know, what are some of our priorities for staff development today, with the principals on some of those early release days, so we'll be devising a plan and talking about strategic planning, what to do this summer, to determine what our priorities, we all had different priorities from different people, you know, my priorities were different than like elementary principals, so we'll, we'll have to do a little bit of tugging and pulling to decide what, there's plenty of things to work on, but we also want to hone in on what's the most important.
And I think, you know, we wanted to avoid doing too much more, I mean, given just all of the different things that have happened in the 17, 18 calendar, 18, 19 calendar, you know, our goal was to try and, hey, let's, let's kind of keep this as calm as possible for the time being, and we'll, you know, maybe at the end of that, we'll see if there makes something as we look at 2021, or whatever, if there's something that makes sense, but at this point, I think that's, we're not asking for anything beyond that purpose, but I think it's been helpful to have those, I think that's been very helpful for PD perspective.
Yeah, and I have not heard anything, any pushback from any of them.
Well, I know particularly coming from the, you know, the high school level, you know, being able to use that time this year in particular to work on the high school schedule issue has been particularly helpful, because otherwise it would have been very difficult to pull that off in the middle of the year, so.
I don't know what else I have to comment, but the staff development is, there's five for grades 6 through 12, that 5 is 4, is that, is it a comp?
Yeah, so basically, when we did the, when we were looking at the reduction of the contract days from 186 to 184 for 18, 19, and then again for 19, 20, one of those was a student contact day, and that's the date, it's in April there, and the other one was parent-teacher conference time, the secondary doesn't use parent-teacher conference time to the same degree that the elementaries do, and we tried to provide some flexibility, so that if elementary still wanted the same amount of time, they could get that, but then what the sacrifice is, is they give up some professional development time, that's, that's the swap-out. They take more parent-teacher conference time, and then the February 15th date, or on this calendar, it's a February 14th date, Friday the 14th becomes the swap-out date, so that they would not have professional development, they'd be off on that day, because they're putting in two more four-hour evenings.
Due to conference.
Due to parent, having an extra parent-teacher conference.
Thank you. So, this will come back for official approval, then, second reading in our next board meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for Dale?
Sam.
Thank you, sir. Okay, move on to 3.3, Special Technology Update. Brian?
Hello?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Did everyone have the edits to the handbook and everything in your packet? I'm going to give you a copy, just in case, sometimes it's nicer if you want to pass those. I'll get infected from the paper coming around. We like to check in every year on the digital device handbook, CD handbook. Not a lot changed this year, we've kind of gotten to the point where we're just making minor edits as we go along, but I'll just point out the most significant things, there's a lot of cleanup items. Toward the back of the handbook, we did clarify a couple things relating to insurance, the biggest one being like accidental loss, there's a lot of confusion about that, because we weren't really making a distinction between theft and misplaced, it's not a very clear one, and people were confused, and there was variations between the domains. So, we tightened up the wording on that. We're not going to penalize a student for misplacing it necessarily, so that, that wasn't really clear before, and we do still ask that if someone like breaks into your car and steals your MacBook, if that is actually what's happening, we do still want like a police report or some record that just helps us, because then if it turns up somewhere, we can have that backup. But, you know, kid leaves not in a playground, we're not making him file a police report for that, right? It's upsetting, but we're not going to further compound the matter. That is probably the biggest thing in there that's not just, you know, cosmetic or just cleanup things. Was there anything you guys noticed or had any questions about as far as the device handbook did work?
I was curious to know why the price is this.
I'm going to get to that, just getting to that, I want to go through this, and then I'm going to go to the form. Yeah. So, yeah, I can move on to that. The device insurance form, which is like the permission slip, and also the, where people choose the option of whether they're taking insurance or declining it, yes, the price, the insurance cost went down 20% this year. The reason for that, there's a couple of reasons. One is, the insurance is a pool. The pool of insurance money is healthy, and I don't need it to rise any more than it has. It kind of isn't intuitive and not really a point, you know, this isn't a money-making tool, it's a, it's a pool. It's intended to work like any other insurance, where you assume a certain amount of risk, you finance that risk, and then you try and keep it as neutral or as, you know, drawn down as you can without running out of money. So, there's that, and then, part of the reason it's healthy is that, a couple of reasons. One, we've gotten to the point where after a couple of years, we have a pretty solid process on repair, and what we, you know, what we choose to repair, how we repair it, we are in a good place as far as the amount of loss we have. Some districts are far worse than us, we're, you know, it may seem like a lot gets broken, but really, not really. Like, less than 5% of our devices get damaged every year, to the point where there's a cost incurred. You know, sometimes things, you know, like if a microphone breaks off in the headphone jack, and finally you have to take the thing out, but that's an incident, but it's not costing the same thing most of the time. So, I don't know, that's the one benefit of doing it yourself, you get good at it, and you're able to save some money, so, hence, yes, we're actually lowering the fee this year.
Yay. We got to celebrate ourselves.
That's right. So, so that's how that happened.
Great.
I was going to ask the same thing, what's the pool look like, but you already answered that question.
It's good.
It's nice to see, I remember the first one of these that came out years ago, and every year now it's giving all, it's language changes, otherwise it's, feels like you kind of follow your groove with this, and you're really in a good place, feels like you really are, at least.
Yeah, we're feeling good about it.
And, do you want to touch on, there's a slight change in procedure for last year, yeah, MacBooks, the kids had to opt out of keeping it, and now they just turn it in if they.
So, this summer, 9th through 11th graders have the option of just holding on to their MacBook over summer. Last year, we made them bring home a form and get it signed and bring it back. And what happened was, we set a deadline, and then, from that point, from the point of the deadline onto the last day of school, it was, oh, I just found my form, oh, they can accept me, oh, you, it, it turned into kind of a zoom with tracking forms and going through all the rigmarole, and, you know, it just made more sense to kind of assume that as a learning tool, we let them all onto it over summer, you know, let them get the benefit of the device, or otherwise it's going to shut off for three months.
Right.
Another part of that was, we looked at what came back last summer, after allowing this, after kind of piloting that concept, looking at the amount of damage or loss we had over summer, it was not significant, it was not a problem. I don't know if and when we'll extend this to iPads, but I'm comfortable with the MacBook group, the high school students essentially doing this.
Do we have a, do we have a, is there an option for our graduating seniors to purchase there?
There's not, because of Policy 802, which kind of lays out the requirements for sale of a device. We can't, essentially, we can't sell an individual device to an individual person. We can auction something, if they happen to be the highest bidder of that particular device, that's fine, but even that isn't our first choice, when we can take groupings of devices and sell them in a lot, and probably get a better overall sale price for that. So, we've done that a couple times this year, you've seen that come across on a couple of board meetings, the approval to declare a batch of surplus.
So, in your estimation, it's better to do it the way we're doing it than to?
It's financially better for the district to do it that way. It's unfortunate, there's not a loophole or something, I wish I, I wish we could, just the law and the policy don't allow for it, and the policy is based on state law in terms of disposal of other property.
Huh? That's not part of the law.
Exactly. So, yeah, that's the deal with that, and the other question that I get, you know, the Saks kids, people that they buy, you know, they're purchasing that outright at those, at that school, so that's the difference.
Their iPad, the iPads?
Chromebooks, whatever they use over there, that's what I've been told. So, the comparison there is, they're, they're having the kids pay for the whole price.
Oh, a product.
So, they're essentially buying it through the school, while we're not going to, I don't know that we can sustain charging a bunch of freshmen under bucks for a MacBook and hoping it makes it.
Right.
So, yeah, we've looked at that, thought about it, I get the emails from the parents occasionally, that's the only answer I have.
Got it.
Any questions for Brian?
Anybody to stick around with ties?
I would like to stay, and the draft comes during you.
All right, move on to 3.4, everybody's favorite topic. Everybody's favorite topic.
It's good news, though.
It is. It's better news than it was.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Are you counting? Are you doing this?
Oh, I can talk.
Oh, I got this. Playing once.
Yeah, I was kinda waiting for the screen to wake up. I was thinking about it. There it goes.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Where did we leave this or what's the update we wanna get, Derry?
I think we just want to share some of the numbers on the dissolution and the impact.
Okay. I think the budget changes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'll bring up. So, let me get this to sort out a little bit. So, I'll walk through basically the revised billing and kind of explain the things that are lined out or changed. Couple things. They have basically a mandatory fee they would charge every year. It was $5 a student. That's not gonna be charged next year. So, that is off the top of the savings, about $42,000 depending on our rule of number includes pre-K, so it's about 80, 83, 80, so shy of 8,400 students. So, there's that. So, next year, we still pay for EdScreen and Keep Certified because we're still kind of transitioning, we're still using EdScreen for assessment. And we are still using Keep Certified. That's what the teachers use to track their professional development, their hours toward recertification, all that stuff. Keep Certified is going to go away for sure after next year because we'll have moved all that to picking up a professional learning management piece as part of Frontline. Frontline's the company that buys out all the other companies. So, they own Aesop and Baratime and AppleTrack, all those things. So, they bought another company and deals with professional growth and they're all under this big umbrella. So, that's gonna get taken care of. But the big number was under special assessment. The worst-case scenario was $35 a student, which is pretty steep, with another 35 to 37 per student next year. So, the next-year number is totally gone. This year's number has dropped to, they're saying 17 to 20. For my purposes, I'm going to 20 because I always run conservative when I do the math on this stuff. So, that drops, it was a 293, 300, drops down to 167, 600. So, all told, between, you know, the mandatory $5 fee and the drop in the special assessment, we're up about 160, 170 there from worst-case what we were expecting to spend the ties next year. So, that's where that's at.
So, I like the savings there, but those next steps and the, you know, the whole future is uncertain kind of thing is, I don't know, unsettling. But the future can be uncertain, that's fine. But if it were to stay as-is for, say, another two or three years, would we expect our assessment to be in the $235,000 range or would it shoot back up to 400?
It's, the way it's been stated, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be another special assessment next year as far as I know. That's the way, that's, that's the way they're stating it now. And there may be a little variation this year if a lot of people just suddenly drop off, drop services.
And Ties has assets as well. And so, we should eventually benefit from some of those assets such as the Ties building near the, near the state fairgrounds there. And so, as a sale occurs, the assets would be split up between districts still to part of Ties.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, that the original, that $35 and 293, they're calculating what their liabilities are. So, I can't imagine that, now they're saying that it's a, it's a one-year. And as Superintendent Anger says, they'll also have a distribution of assets. So, I don't think that they could miss that and that that would go back to that 293 that's following here.
No.
Yeah. And for the record, for the public, there's a company called Sourcewell, and this is what they do. They go in and clean up situations like this. And so, they're the company that is, that is kind of, I don't know, taking over all of Ties management for, for better or worse, just for the record. And there's plenty of information about what they do for you.
I guess, so, Ryan, when you were saying this year, you actually mean next budget year?
I mean, 12, yeah, 18.
Okay. I didn't know if this was an instant.
I already think in terms.
Yeah. It feels like you mean already built the budget.
We already had the pain this year because we got the special assessment this year of nearly 60,000. So, which wasn't, we weren't expecting that one, so.
But again, this is a very positive budget trend for next school year, 18, 19, really.
Thank you. You're always welcome to come back and bring something. Doing this book that I read.
Wrapping the fees, cutting the ties.
Okay, Dave, dropping up to drop more fees or what are you gonna do? You gotta keep, keep in line. Hey, go, go up with that 15 years. You know, I suck at it, I'm a per.
Let's see, I got, oh, right. We're saving a little bit. There was a line item on changing from map testing to fast.
Yep.
That caught everybody's attention. I can talk about that, that wasn't on the agenda, but it's about money. I will just say I'm in it on that since you brought it up. FAST stands for Formative Assessment System for Teachers. It is, it has an adaptive reading, an adaptive map test, which means as students answer questions, if they're getting them right, they get harder questions, if they're getting them wrong, they get easier questions. And what it does is, just like the map test, which we've taken for years, it levels out and then it has a statistical algorithm that it goes through to find a kid's level with as few a questions as possible. So, if you actually looked at the score of a kid that took a map test, I'll speak to that because I have more experience with it. Kids are actually only getting half the questions right, no matter how they scored. So, you get one right, it gets harder. You get one right, it gets harder. You get one wrong, you get one, and it's constantly adapting. So, it might swing a little bit and then it's kind of narrowing in on the band where this kid is at. And then when it gets to the point where this algorithm says, I'm statistically confident this is the kid's actual level, it stops jumping around so much and that locks them in essentially to where they are. And it adapts over a wide range. And so, you can see kids score all over, but fairly consistently with where they are. And this will do the same thing. So, when we say adaptive, that's what we mean. To contrast that with the MCA test, which we just finished math and reading last week for this year, it was originally a standards-based test. And what it did, its, its main goal, and we've tried to make it do more than that, is say, are you proficient on your grade level standards? So, the questions are written and you either know them, you're proficient, or you don't. That's, it's a measure of where you're at with regard to standards. The adaptive test kind of takes the lid off and lets you go all over the place. The MCA test has changed over the years and they're trying to do more with something that was just designed to be a measure of proficiency and they've adapted it now. So, if you're a fifth grader, it can adapt up or down to grade levels. But your proficiency on the test is only based on how you did on the grade level questions that were derived on those standards. That's it. The other questions, the adapting up and adapting down questions, off-grade level questions, are used to calculate this measure that the legislature required regarding your, your college readiness. Some people have argued that that's not what the test was designed for. We're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, but that was legislatively required, so that's what they've done. That could change. I think there might even be a proposal to change that back because it also lengthens the test a bit as well. That was bonus. This was not on the agenda.
And now for the medium end.
Yeah. So, last time, I mentioned that it might be good to start looking at ESSA and understanding that a little better, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was the, really a replacement for No Child Left Behind. Just for a little history on that, there was No Child Left Behind. Then Minnesota had a waiver and part of that was, if you remember, the term MMR, that multiple measurement rating. That was, that was still under No Child Left Behind, but all states were then submitting waivers to try to make this purely proficiency-based and negative system that was built on consequences of you failed or you didn't, you made adequate yearly progress or you didn't, and try to make it better. This is, this would be like the next attempt at doing that, this Every Student Succeeds Act. Okay? So, I'm gonna talk about that because I think you will be hearing much more about this going forward. And this year will be the first time that our results are actually reported through this accountability system. Okay? And that won't happen until later this summer. And it's not even fully developed what it's gonna look like. All right? So, I'm gonna do this in the context also, it's mostly gonna be about the Every Student Succeeds Act, but I also wanna compare that with World's Best Workforce because there can be some confusion when you're talking about these two. And again, I wouldn't expect you to be an expert walking out of here, but kind of having the big picture look at these two things, I think is important. So, I'm gonna lay these two next to each other and just for some context, the ESSA is a federal law that's under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, it's part of that. World's Best Workforce is part of the state of Minnesota's laws, okay? And they each are doing different things, unfortunately, and I'll talk about that. So, this will be a lot. Under ESSA, there are five measures. There's an achievement-based measure. And just for context, this top one, that was No Child Left Behind. You either had a high percentage of kids proficient or you didn't. If you didn't, you were called a failing school. If you did, you were just doing your job, okay? And it was across all those student groups and all that. I don't know if you remember that. Now, we have added in our EL students who take a different test, the ACCESS test. It's a measure of English language proficiency and their growth is measured. There's a, there is a growth measure and we're actually measuring it differently now. They call it growth towards proficiency. And as kids move from does not meet to partially meets or partially meets to meet standards, you earn points as a district. All your points are aggregated and you go from there. Then there's graduation, which is typically been focused on four years. And now, they're adding in the seven-year rate. And I think there's two reasons why that is the case. One is, we have a lot of kids that are on, I think it's called the Transition IP, is that right? Yeah, you know, yeah. And many of those go, they are in effect till age 21. And so, by design, a student isn't gonna be graduating till that time. And so, it's in recognition that, just like even in college, we talk about it all the time, that we just want kids to graduate. It would be great if you're paying tuition that they finish in four years or less. But a lot of people take more than four years and we basically say, that's okay. I don't think we're ready to do that in high school yet, but this is a bit of a recognition of that. And then this bottom piece was, a lot of the education reformers talked about how much different this was gonna be than the old accountability system. You're gonna have flexibility, there's gonna be these other measures. Well, it comes down to just that one. It's called the school quality measure. And they're measuring school quality outside of the assessment results and graduation rates on percentage of your kids that are attending 90% or more of the time they're enrolled. It's called consistent attendance. This was in contrast, too. There was, they wanted to state it positively. You've probably more heard the term chronic absenteeism before. This is the, I thought maybe we should call it chronic attendance, but that was, that didn't fly. And here's World's Best Workforce. This is what, I've shared this before and it was also part of that district advisory committee. They weighed in on this a bit. There's measures around having all kids ready for school, third graders reading at grade level, closing the achievement gap, all students' career in college ready, and then students graduating. And so, if you compare these two, you got this proficiency-based measure, which you could argue the third grade thing is that. And the achievement gap, if you measure it using MCA proficiency, is that. But they're really not, neither of them are one-for-one, right? It's kind of a forcing it a little bit. Then you got this one, which actually is one-for-one, I mean, it's there. And then if you really wanted to push it a little bit, you could say, if kids are progressing toward, you know, English language proficiency, the gap in achievement should be closing. If kids are growing on this transition matrix that I talked about, you should be closing the achievement gap. But they're really two different systems. So, something to be aware of, state versus federal. This one reports at the district level. This one gives you school-level results and district level, okay? There has been a lot of requests to try to align these two systems more tightly, but so far, that has not happened. You may also hear, they are doing some branding around ESSA and calling it the North Star system. North Star takes mostly ESSA things, but some of the things I've seen published also roll in World's Best Workforce. So, you might have this kind of third thing to deal with that's composed of, those two kind of merged together in some way. I tried to get NDE to clarify that for me and the message I got back when I asked my question was, it sounds like you understand this. I think you're good. And so, that was it. That was the clarity I got. So, you understand it now as well as I do, okay? Some things that are gonna change. ESSA, this will be the first time we do the calculations under ESSA this summer. And there are a number of differences. These are very nuanced, but to be aware of it. We went from five racial and ethnic groups to seven and they added, they split Asian and Pacific Islander apart and they added this one, two or more races. So, if a student identifies as two or more non-Hispanic races, they are in the two or more group. So, it could be any pairing of two or three or whatever. And then there's this thing called countergroups, where we used to just measure proficiency, say, for our English language learners. Now, they'll have a measure for the group of English language learners and non-English language learners. So, you have way more groups now because you have the group and the countergroup. The argument was that if a kid was in some of these student groups, they could be in five different groups, whereas another kid is only in two different groups. With the countergroups, everybody's counted the same, okay? That was in response to that. This is just a visual and I have a couple of copies of this that you can have of the five measures under ESSA. If you like the little graphics, maybe they're nice reminders of what those are. There's a little more detail on here as well. Basically, what will happen is, ESSA is designed to identify schools that need additional support, is how they're, they're calling it now. And the state will come in either through their regional centers of excellence or people they have on staff and come in and provide support to schools, okay? And this system is about helping identify who those schools are. No Child Left Behind was only for Title I schools. Yeah, those were the, if you remember, I don't know, probably you remember all those times. I was at Sweeney, we were Title, and Pearson was Title. We were the only two Title. So, while we were getting the consequences of No Child Left Behind. So while we were getting the consequences of No Child Left Behind and performing as well as the other schools, they weren't having that fun in the work. But now this one is for everybody. Okay? Everybody's part of this. It starts though with title schools. Here's how it works. It's kind of like a funnel to some degree. They take all the Title I schools and they say, are you in the lowest quarter of math, reading, or growth for your English language students? If you are, you get to go to the next stage. If you're not, you don't get identified. So you go to stage two. Then they check your growth in math and reading. If you wind up in the lower 25% of the remaining schools, again, you go on. If not, you get what they're calling just plain normal support, to be determined what that means. Okay? If you get into here, they came up with, it needs to be 5% of the title schools, which there were close to 700 of them. So 5% is 34 elementary schools. So if you're then in the bottom 34, you wind up in this comprehensive support. If you're not in that bottom 34, you get what they're calling targeted support. So that's how the funnel goes. Okay? This is just title schools. This is the same thing for high schools. So this was elementary and middle. This is high schools. Takes out some of the growth pieces and replaces it with graduation rates. Four-year rate, seven-year rate. Because so few high schools get title funds, the bottom 5% is only six schools. So that's telling me there's only about 120 high schools that receive title funds in the district. Okay? This is a lot, not going to, I didn't share this ahead of time, but I'll make sure.
So before you, so we have not identified support, targeted, comprehensive, but nobody knows what is in those buckets.
We know how to get in the buckets.
Sure. But we don't know what happens.
We have something on this handout that I will be giving you. Here's what they say comprehensive support is. You will receive ongoing onsite support from the regional centers of excellence. That's what it says so far. Okay? And for targeted improvement, it says you will participate in professional development and networking opportunities with the regional centers of excellence. Support just says receive MDD support through professional development and networking opportunities.
This is not necessarily additional funding.
No.
It isn't.
It's just support.
Yes. And exactly what that includes, there might be something that explains it more than this, but I think they're scrambling a little bit.
And this network of excellence or whatever, is that what?
Regional center.
Okay, what's that?
They exist. We're going to find out because they're scheduling meetings with districts and so we'll be a part of some of those meetings coming up and learning how. It's important to note that, you know, the efforts originally we're talking about, let's simplify all this stuff. I don't know that that's been achieved very well because now you've got this federal layer and this state layer. And know that anything can change at the state. You know, we've had the same commissioner for a long time and that commissioner is done when the governor's done. And so know that, you know, we're not at the mercy, but we will adjust as information comes to us and do what we're supposed to do. But the good thing is if it's all about student achievement and helping kids, great. And we're right there and we're excited about it. But yeah, as far as simplifying, I don't know that that's been achieved.
Yeah. And so I think part of it, what we talked about last time was I do think, I mean, you're going to hear this and to be able to speak to it, I think is going to be important. So how big chunks of information do you want on this? Maybe, because I have more, but maybe you have enough for today. I'll look for your.
I'm sure they'd like another hour of it. No, I'm just kidding.
Has it been a while already?
I personally feel like if we don't know what happens underneath there, we don't really know where we fit, I don't know how much more we need.
Yeah, I wouldn't be interested in the.
If we had.
It's offline.
I think our obligation really, what I'm thinking is to keep the board educated, keep the public educated about this so that there's some familiarity about what is ESSA and because it is here and part of the package now.
So then I'll make just a couple of comments and close. And that is, I think it is complicated, but the stuff that Minnesota, the materials Minnesota Department of Ed are putting together are actually quite good. They're understandable, the graphics, and they're trying to simplify that. Okay? And they're really trying to not make this a negative thing. Even the language is different. I know get identified, it still won't feel as good as not getting identified, but they're talking about really making it supportive. And to that end, I think this part is important, that they're estimating based on their numbers, they're going to be supporting between 300 and 400 schools, which is way more than before. And it is meant to be a supportive model. And then there's this piece too, which is it will be in effect for all schools, not just Title I schools. And so it really is meant to be, like they talked about this networking with other schools and really meant to be a collaborative, supportive, work-together piece. But since we haven't done it before, we don't know, I mean, we don't know 100% what it's going to look like on the reporting and on the peer accountability side as well. I'll stop now. Good?
Good.
Any questions?
Very good information.
Good. Would you say this has been the highlight?
Of the meeting?
Two speakers out. Two speakers out.
Jerry's out. He can't leave without affirmation.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
All right, 3.6, community budget discussion, 2018.
Yeah, no, they don't change them.
What did you do?
It's very user-friendly.
Brian's here.
Oh, there you go.
Delay there. So what I'd like to do tonight is get you prepared as I think we'll be bringing the final budget or asking you to approve the budget at the meeting at the end of May. So what we're asking you to do, what we will be asking you to do is approve the budget. It'll be for fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. You recall that you've already done some budget adjustments. We proactively plan to reduce expenditures by 2.6 million. That is helping us to present a balanced budget. And we anticipate ending the fiscal year at a surplus of $425,000 and an assigned fund balance of 1.2 million. And then it's kind of a quick overview of funds. I know you probably hear more about the general fund. I think the presentations I've done have all been about the general fund and that's the big fund that accounts for the basic take throughout educational operations. But we're required to have the separation of funds for some other types of activity. And those are things like food service. I think just the name of these other funds can tell you what they're, what the activity involved in those funds are. Food Service Fund, the Community Education, Community Service Fund, the Building Construction Fund. Right now what we're using that for obviously is to account for the expenditures for the expansion of the high school. And then we have our debt service fund. That's our fund that records the activity for paying off our debt. And we've got an internal service fund for our self-funded health and dental programs and a trusted agency fund, one of small kind of scholarship fund. And then again, our big OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust that helps us alleviate some of the expenditures in, from the general fund. So kind of a big picture, looking at the, looking at the big numbers, looking at projected revenue, projected expense, and then the projected fund equity. You can see that the general fund, there's our surplus that we're expecting. So 99 million in revenue, 98.7 expense, fund equity up to 1.5. I think as you can see, with these funds, in most cases, we're presenting a balanced budget or with a surplus, with the exception of food service and building construction that I'll talk about in a second. But food service, kind of have spent down a fund balance at about $650,000 a couple of years ago, but we're replacing some equipment. So equipment capital expense is an allowable expenditure of food service. Our fund balance is at about 7%. So I think when you're there, you can start to use some of those, some of that fund balance to acquire equipment. And again, we're at 7%, so food service is pretty healthy. You can't have that fund be in a negative situation. If it is, you have to subsidize the loss from the general fund. We're not, because we have fund balance, we're not having to do that, haven't had to in the past. Community end, slight surplus, fund balance equity, fund equity at $318,000. Building construction looks kind of upside down, but that's how the building construction works. What we're seeing there is projected revenue is some interest that will get on the fund balance. And then our projected expense is winding down the project at the high school. And so we end up with fund balance, projected equity of $166,000.
And on the construction fund?
Yeah.
Some of the construction will take place in August, September, but are those finances all during the summer?
Yeah, I would say that this, most of this will be done over the summer. Fiscal year begins July.
Yeah.
Yeah, these expenditures will basically happen over the summer.
Okay.
Yeah. Debt service fund, that's again our interest in principle on our bonded debt. Fund balance, well, we missed one here. There we go. Then we have our scholarship fund, that trust fund in fund equity there. And then you just want that fund to be, to never go into a deficit. The internal service fund, 9.1 million, expenditures of 9.165. You know, we are pretty new into the self-funded game, I think. Third year? Starting next year, we are. You would like to get that to about a 20% fund balance. So we've got a ways to go. We are increasing premium by 10% this year. So hopefully we'll see that fund balance grow and get up closer to that 20%. And then the OPEB trust, again, that's there for paying the benefits for other post-employment benefits for retirees. The projected revenue is $450,000, basically interest, and then the expense of 199. And that's the implicit rate subsidy. That's the additional cost we pay because we have retirees in the program. But we can take that, if we didn't have the trust, it's an irrevocable trust, if we didn't have the trust, that 199 would be coming out in the general fund. So that's a great thing to have this trust in place to help those expenditures.
It's important to note that there was a significant investment made to that fund some years back and it's in the interest of taking care of our teachers and staff for years to come. And that has continued to grow, so that's a good thing. It's a good investment that we made. And that was what, 10, 12 years ago, something it was, we found it was the silver date. We were going to afford it, it was from the board, it was very forward thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great thing to have, to have in place in the district. So we look at all funds, 130 million, revenue 146. Shouldn't be learned about that deficit there because if we take out the construction fund and we're looking pretty good. So now I'll go and kind of look at each fund, but I want to throw a slide in here on enrollment. It's just critical for the general fund. So I would say our, with our funding formula that are in place in the general fund, 80% of them probably track back to what that enrollment is. And it really goes to the total weighted pupil units at the bottom. So we are projecting about 49 more students. Think that we might be conservative. Hope we're conservative there. Well, I don't want to be accurate, but if we're not right on the money, then we want to be conservative. So 9,120 total weighted pupil units. And we take that number and attach that to all kinds of different funding formulas throughout the, throughout the general fund. So I had a question, I know an email on this. So what I use here, I take these, I kind of copy what's in the district's audit report. So we call them summary statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. And I like to use these because when you get the annual audit, that's the format that you're going to get from the auditors that's required under GAAP accounting. And so then we have a doc, so where did these numbers come from? Well, you take these right back to the annual audit. So, and the question was on 1617. So we're at 92.3 revenue and then expenditures of 97.2, what we have. And I'll just jump to that next slide. So then we have what's called an other financing source. And again, follows GAAP accounting. And we have to pull that out of, it's really a negative expenditure, but for audit presentation, it has to be shown separately. And it is in your audit report. So we get down to, so the overspending is 1.4, not that difference that you see, not the 92.3 to 97.2. That makes, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, just to be clear. This is a year ago and this audit was done last winter, right? The 1617 fiscal year.
Right. Yeah.
So, and that's why there's an audit number there where there isn't for current here.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, so what we're doing. So when I put, when I use these summary statements of revenue, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, I have the audit from 1617. And then I just use that same format, looking at the revised budget for 1718 and then the proposed budget for 1819. Do the same thing for every fund. So we can always just kind of track back, look at all these numbers, at least the actual numbers from the audit report. So we're talking about 1819. And we see our projection there, revenues over expenditures of $425,000 and ending fund balance, 1 point, just over 1.5 million. So if we did, and I've talked with Brian, if we did a capital lease, the bottom line won't change, but we would go back and say if we did that yet this year, then the $94 million on the expenditures would probably increase. And let's say we did a million dollars, it would increase. And then we would have here another financing source. So it would net the same way, but it's just following what the auditors do and generally accepted accounting principles. So right now, we're not putting anything in there. We probably will do a capital lease and it is, like I said, just a wash between revenues and expenditures. Questions on that? Because I know there was concern in email then, why, we didn't overspend. No, we didn't, but you have to kind of show that separately. And I do that because I want to be able to tie back to an audit report.
I appreciate being a link or back when we refer people back to the audit. I guess this is the crystal ball question, right? I know that the books don't close until well into fall for this fiscal year for the 1718, but we're projecting a $36,000 surplus, right? A positive into the debt fund.
Yeah.
Any, I've known you've only been here a few months. Any, are we tracking towards that or are we?
Yeah, we are. And I'll spend a little bit of time at the end here. We sent out the budget reports. So I will go into a couple things. So, thirty-six-thousand dollars, that's not a big margin of error there. We have some contingency items built in. I think we're a little bit off on our special education categorically. But I do think that we're going to end up in a positive situation, okay? For the current year. So, we're still using, you know, we're still using, the board has approved the revised budget, so those are the numbers that we use. The auditors, actually, I think they're scheduled to be here in October. But we, typically, we can come back to the board in probably end of July, August, and say, this is where we're going to end up. Soon as we know our enrollment numbers, as soon as we run the final payroll for the fiscal year, then we, we know where we're at. So, I think we do now, and I would say, right now, I would say I think we're going to be in a surplus situation, thirty-six thousand, a hundred thousand, it'll be, you know, I don't think we're going to have a huge surprise going to the other one. Again, we can do that much earlier, we have to wait for the auditors. So, I think, come when we say, and we've got this approval, that approval. And so, we should be able to be pretty accurate early, right away, as soon as we take care of some of those who we know, the enrollment and, and the payrolls.
Just so you know, we literally talked about enrollment with each of the principals today. We're watching those kindergarten, and it's like a hawk. That's, that's a big, big driver for us. And obviously, there's some construction starting to pop, so we need to, we're going to be following that really closely to see if that has an impact on us.
Well, it's, I'm glad we're in a position where we're being very conservative, right? Because for so many years, even, you know, once the recession babies kind of got into school, we've been right around six-hundred, right? And I think five-seventy-three is a nice way to be conservative with the ability to adjust up as students present themselves.
Okay, questions on general?
Well, no question, my only ask, kind of piggybacking off what Matt had said, the, and I don't want to harp on sixteen-seventeen, but if you took numbers straight out here without the appropriate clarification, one food incorrectly advertised that we had lost five billion dollars, but that's not what happened. So, my ask of anybody that might publish anything having to do with the slide, that you get the clarity that you need to make sure that it's actually articulated the way it needs to be.
Yeah, so if you're looking, if you're looking at the audit report, you would see the, for sixteen-seventeen, you'd see that level of revenue, that level of expenditures. But you've got to track yourself down to the bottom of the page and see that other financing source.
And that's also breaking news here, it was all done last year.
Exactly.
Yeah, the auditors would have presented.
Exactly, there are some that might be excited about that, just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Yep. So, then we just kind of follow with that format for the other, the other funds. So, the special revenue funds, the community service, food service that you see here, again, we see that any fund balance projected eighteen-nineteen, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. Again, the actuals would track right back to the prior year cap or audit report. And same thing for the education, three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-dollar total equity. And you rarely, rarely will see any other financing sources we can respond to. The formats can set up, set up some of the, the same way. Building construction, where we project that to go to a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand with the completion of the high school over the summer. And then our debt service fund, the three-year fund balance. And we have one more thing that we need to talk about in the budget.
Well, before you mention this, Jeff, I just want to remind people, you know, these ending fund balances are small numbers, they're, you know, in the grand scheme of a district our size. And that's why we're being so careful with every taxpayer dollar. And so, just a reminder that, you know, we're, when you see a fund balance, they're pretty miniscule for a district our size, and that's why we're working, working on this.
So, that one-point-five in the general fund is, yeah, we probably want to have that. Eventually, get that back to six, seven percent. We did have one, one more piece of information that we needed to present as we prepare to have the board to find the budget, and that's the fee increase. So, if you remember when you approved the budget adjustments at the last meeting, we added back some of the activities at the middle school level, and we said we would come back and cover that with some fee increases. So, if we look at middle school athletics, sixth through eighth grade, the current number there is, it's, the fee is sixty-five dollars. We're proposing that that goes to one-hundred dollars. And then the band and choir academic areas, our academic activities, current is forty. We know we're kind of well behind surrounding districts. We would take that to eighty-five-dollar level and generate thirty-six-thousand dollars.
That's enough to actually add a little bit of surplus?
Yeah, yeah, and that number's been added in, so when we're talking about that four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand surplus, we have this built in, but.
These increases do not put us at the high end of comparative districts at all, not even close.
So, yeah.
I, well, I just want, I just want to say that I had a long talk with Mr. Janey about this when we were discussing middle school sports, and I, I do fully support these increases, primarily because I do believe that our athletics and activities, while not self-sustaining, I do believe that for the kids who participate, there should be a responsibility to help cover those costs. I also, when I talked to him about this, my biggest concern was for the families who, who this might impact truly negatively. And for those families, nothing will change. We still have scholarships available, and we will not turn any kid away from any activity.
Then I just wanted to jump to these, to these budget reports, and we prepare these for, for all funds. But when you ask, are we on target, and let's skip around here. You know, when we look at, when we look at the revenue, we know that our, that our tax levy, those dollars are pretty much, they're going to be what we budgeted, we're budgeting the certified levy. And when we look at the state aid components, and most of those being tied to pupil units, our pupil unit counts are correct, those numbers are, are going to shake out. Once you get past the state aid and taxes, you have most of your revenue accounted for with the general fund. But as, if we talk about the, let me get to the right spot here. So, probably more seventeen-eighteen as a revised budget than next year. But I'll tell you the one thing that I go right to, because expenditures, you know, eighty, eighty percent of our expenditures are in salaries and benefits. And then most of those expenditures track right to the one-forty, object code, instructional license. And what we look at, and I think what's really good about this report is we go percent expended. And we're on a, obviously, we're on a fiscal year, but we have different sequences where people get paid. So, we have, we have eight more payrolls that are reported here for line item one-forty. So, that could be at sixty-nine-point-two-nine percent, and we're at sixty-nine oh-six. That might have been one of the first things I did when I got here, let's do. When you want to see where you're at for the current year, you look at that line item.
It's the first one I looked at, too.
Pretty much, everything will track, the rest of the salaries will, if that one's in line, I think that our salaries come up. The other thing that we built in here was under the revised budget, and we've kept some of that in for next year, but that one-ninety-seven object code, four-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency. I think when I met with the board finance committee, I said, you know, we need to get to the point where maybe we don't have that. We know we're really accurate, we really have to build in those contingencies. I appreciate another, another year of, but maybe for the next year, well, we'll know our numbers are really accurate. So, on the benefit side, same thing, a hundred-thousand dollars, contingency built in, you know, a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand for the next year. And I just want to answer a couple of questions we had in email, one having to do with the utility area. So, that's the object code three-thirty, three-thirty-one, three-thirty-two, three-thirty-three. So, let's just look at natural gas, two-fifty-five, budget this year, two-fifty-five, six. Question was, why isn't that increasing when we're going to be adding three-hundred square foot space? We probably haven't, this year, we've already been paying for that space. Probably not from the get-go in the fiscal year, but, you know, there's lights, there's heat, we've been heating that area. So, that kind of is built in. I did look at this, a little concerned with that fourteen-thousand-dollar deficit for this year. But what we determined was, for whatever reason, last year, when we, you know, we do the audit, the auditors, they're here, and we're doing expenditures, recognizing expenditures as of June thirty, and then there's things that get accrued, for some reason, we missed June of last year. So, so we have thirteen months, and it's not that we didn't pay it, but we have thirteen months in this current year. So, that'll obviously be corrected as we roll into next year. And then we have a closing of the building, and we, we recognize as part of our budget adjustments, twenty-thousand dollars in savings. So, kind of all that plays through, and that's kind of where that number, why that number ends up in that area. And I think it's, I think it should be fairly accurate, really accurate. And I just scroll down, and this, this talks about the, there we go. So, another comment in email was that, well, this, and these are more internal documents, but I think they should probably all be the same. If you look at total numbers, everything does tie out. But here is where we have under that five-eighty-nine, that's that lease, that's that other financing source. And so, here we show it as that negative expense. So, we tie this expense out, and that's not that ninety-seven. So, I think we just need to change this internal document, so we always are reporting on the same number. This one, I don't think, well, it's here for me, so it is a public document. But I think this is more internal working, but I think we change this to, so everything looks, everything looks the same. And then this is what, and we go down to probably finer details, we're looking at these expenditure line items. You're seeing the summary by object code, what I would say, and everything we're looking at, especially when you go back to the one-forty object code, that's what we're tracking in the current year. So, again, not a, not a huge fund balance addition this year, thirty-six thousand, but I think we'll be there in, in itself. Any questions on these?
I just want to publicly compliment Jeff and compliment Suzanne and her entire finance department this year. And note that, you know, anytime anybody from the public's got a question, we are there with the answer. We're very willing to answer the question. It's one of my pet peeves when people put on misinformation about the budget, because we've been so open about this process, and especially recently, that we're, we're willing to answer any question anybody's got out there, and just want to repeat that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only one, sorry, one question, because I thought I knew the answer, but I don't.
Delayed question.
Yeah, delayed question. Line three-oh-five, consultant fees.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was a significant bump there, could you speak?
Yeah, I had, actually, I had enough to talk about that one, and skip past it. So, that, we've got an increase in expenditures due to our long-term facility maintenance, our LTFM revenue. Okay, so there's, those are going to be expenditures, you, like, you approved the ten-year plan, probably last July. So, we've got a number of projects at the high school, and it, it increased from this year to next. And so, we just put all, we, object codes we could use, I think, probably a five-hundred sequence for building improvements, or three-oh-five consulting, we just put eight-hundred-thousand dollars in the three-oh-five area. But it has to do with the, with the LTFM revenue expenditures.
Why would you put in a consulting, what's the logic?
We probably, yeah, when we come back and revise the budget, we'll know, we'll have contracts in place, we'll know how much is three-oh-five, how much is, yeah, could we have split it, could we?
We could, obviously, we may not spend it, but, you know, you've got lots of long-term projects that you need to get advice on.
But we're not going to pay eight-hundred thousand in consulting.
Very unlikely, very unlikely.
Just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe the other answer there is that we just kind of want it in one place right now, so it's easily identifiable. Maybe, maybe a five-hundred code, building improvement might make more sense, so.
Good question.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there questions for Jeff? We're not taking action tonight, but we're informed again.
Yeah.
A lot of heavy lifting, thank you to your team and to you. All right. Move on to item three-point-seven, discussion regarding enrollment caps and open enrollment for district transfers.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about intra-district transfer, that's easy for me to say first. Just want the board and the public to know again that we have may changes in the intra-district transfer procedures that we have. We're centralizing requests from parents. If parents have previous requests, that's been approved already, it's been, no problem, they're still, they haven't had to fill out a new form. But Sarah's doing a great job of managing as they come in. And what happens is, we will get a request form in, I will review that request. I will contact the principals for which the buildings that a parent is requesting. And then we have approved every single one so far, regardless of location or level. Then we keep one copy at the district office, and the, the school that is receiving the student receives a copy. So, again, we've centralized that process. It's going on without a hitch right now, so if anybody says anything otherwise, send it my way because it's gone very well. We've had a lot of happy parents. Related to that is the topic of open enrollment, and, and also people from outside the district requesting to come in, and also building capacities. I know that there's a lot of questions about that, and boundaries. I get at least an email a week about what's happening with boundaries this year, and nothing's happening with boundaries this year. Our boundaries are set for the, for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Does that mean we won't have boundary conversations next year? Well, as we mentioned, there's some development popping, so I would guarantee we'll at least have conversations next year about boundaries. So, at the same time, as a board and superintendent, we need to be considering, are there capacities at our buildings? You know, are there breaking points where, okay, there, there may be room at a grade level, but you can only serve lunch to so many kids. And so, we've, we're going to be providing you with some sample policies from other districts that, that say, you know what, we do need to cap a building out. And I'm not going to name names of buildings right now, but there may come a point where we say, we really, you know, from, from just running the schoolwise, we need to set, it might be a percent. running a school-wise, we need to set, it might be a percentage that we say above capacity, or a hard number for a specific building, but it's just to let you know tonight that those are things that we're working on, and, and so we don't want to surprise you or the public if we get to a point this summer where we say, this particular building is really at capacity, and we need to shut her down for any more requests, whether they're from people internally, externally, or, or whatever. So, that, that's it, really, on that topic. What questions do you have about that?
I don't have any right now, but I'm sure that we will as it evolves and as we get further into the process, and I think we, we recognize that at some point in time, once we know more about what these developments look like and how many kids show up, we're probably going to have to make some, some shifts, just don't know if that's the year after next, or the following year.
Right.
But, yeah, it's something for us to keep, keep a keen eye on.
Any other questions?
Right here. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have known number four, which is other, so let's go on the horn quick, we'll start with communications folks.
There's a spring signing for our student athletes on Wednesday at, in one second, so I can do the right time.
7:30 AM.
There we go, 7:30 AM at the high school.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, anything?
I'm good.
All right. Jamie, anything?
I do, I have two Destination Imagination teams going to Global's, so they qualify, they will go May 24-ish, it's the week of, right before Memorial Day weekend, so they're frantically scrambling to get everything in order for that.
And where's Global's this year?
It's always in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they take over the campus, they, they stay in the dorms, and it's, it's pretty amazing. I went in 2012, and it was, it's a, it's a great experience.
Want to mention that run on Saturday?
Yes, hello, celebration of children race, Tony, I heard your mom here.
Yes, I am. I said, as long as I'm not running.
He's going to run, he is.
So that is Saturday, appreciate thoughts of good weather, because it's not looking like it's supposed to be very warm, but we have over 200 people enrolled between 5K and the one-mile color run, and then we have just a quick kids' fun run that we don't require registration for, that we do after both those runs are done. We've got a DJ, and we've got Gary, I think you're, aren't you sending everybody off?
I am.
Yes.
I'll be there.
So, we still have a few volunteer spots, but we're pretty good, got the cross-country and track kids coming, we put them to work, and I'm really excited, it's going to be good.
Keith?
I'm good.
Dave?
Gave you everything I had.
Ryan?
I'm good.
Jeff?
What Dave said.
What Dave said.
Uh, drivers ahead, just to let you know, we're approaching 400 registered students for the current school year, and we've got like 75, 80 slots for the summer, so we may finish around 450, 460, which is good. Next year, the program will be during the school year, all at high school, because the ninth graders will be there, and we're adding three after-school classes for the first time in probably seven, eight years, we'll be getting transportation issues from kids moving around, so we'll do that, and that registration information for next year will go out in July to families, so we're communicating that, waiting out for those families who have nightmares entering, so.
That's good, all right, thank you. Angelo, you got anything? Tony?
No, James took it.
Jerry?
We have industry council meetings going on this week with, with many of our, our academy participating groups, and so that's, it's an exciting week that way, and there's a lot of events going on district-wide, and a lot of concerts, and I encourage everybody just to get out and enjoy the school district, and, and our, our kids are absolutely amazing, it's, it's a thrill to, to be seeing all the things we're doing every day.
Just let you know, the baseball team won their first game 7-2, and you gave a, like, you threw up the first pitch.
I'm, again, it was a strike right down the middle, I could not be more relieved.
Do you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah, obviously, Kelly Holstein was named Minnesota Teacher of the Year by Ed Min, it was an amazing event, I, I had the opportunity of being one of Kelly's invited guests, and, and it was, it was an absolute thrill for every single one of us there. Kelly teaches at Tocata, she's an incredible teacher, she is going to represent the state of Minnesota, the Shockley Schools, alternative learning centers, and unbelievably well, and it, we, I can say I was crying with her, her wife, and, and family members, and other people at the, at the guest table, and it was, it's incredible. So Kelly is going to have an amazing year, she couldn't make it tonight, she's already on the press junket, and, and so, we'll be, we'll be hearing from Kelly at a future meeting, and I'm sure several times throughout the year, but unbelievable event, and again, just could not be a more deserving person, first person ever from the Shockley Schools to be named Minnesota Teacher of the Year.
Also, my comments for when she can join us, but that's fantastic.
Yeah, we had another semifinalist, Jake Tofar was also, so, pretty cool, pretty cool.
Speaking of Jake, I just want to reiterate that I would love every human being in Shockley to show up at the technical college on Thursday, between 10 and 1, to watch the inclusive engineering finale, all the kids that, all the clients and the engineers will be there together showing their, their projects, so, I will be very excited.
Nothing for me. Okay, item five, upcoming meetings and important dates, personnel committee meeting, this is early today, five, tomorrow's big day, Teacher Appreciation Day, FOP on Wednesday, and then all kinds of fund policy and finance meetings going forward, and before it goes to the graduation.
Wow.
Just in time for the weather to check, don't they? All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I got it, I can, any discussion? All in favor, saying five, they say aye. All in full, same side.